2001 PM, so I will call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plonket.
Here.
President Polinski.
Here. So we're all here, we obviously have a quorum. I'll read my introductory comments for the remote meeting as I have every week. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams software, and I will ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain the mechanics of Microsoft Teams to members of the public who may have either dialed in or connected via the software.
Thank you, President Polinski. Everyone tonight will join the meeting muted. And when President Polinski calls for public comments, those joining us with the Teams client can toggle their mute status by clicking on the microphone icon on the meeting toolbar. Those joining by audio conference dial-in can toggle their mute status by pressing star six. Only attendees can unmute themselves. No one is able to unmute another attendee. And just a reminder, the public comment can also be provided by emailing publiccomment@wilmette.com or through the Village's YouTube livestream, which is located at the address displayed on the screen right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So for those of you watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order, which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state has suspended the Open Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board, and we are conducting our business slightly in compliance with guidelines from the state. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel six and on the internet at www.youtube.com/user/villageofwilmette/live. So I will read the YouTube Live URL one more time. and there's no spaces or dots or dashes or anything like that. If you're watching on channel six, you may want to switch over to YouTube as there's an easier way to make public comment that way. A recording of this meeting will be archived on the Village's YouTube website as we do with all of our other televised public meetings. Now, a remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation, so to ensure residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. So if you sent an email to publiccomment@wilmette.com prior to the start of the meeting, our staff will read the email during the public comment portion of our agenda. If members of the public who are watching the broadcast would like to participate during the designated public comment periods, you may also submit a comment through the YouTube Live chat feature, and then a member of the staff will read your comment to the board. And also, there are three ways. For those of you who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone, I guess that's four ways, at the appropriate time, I will ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. Because of logistical difficulties of not being together, I will first just ask people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board. I will assemble a list, and then I'll call on individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people who are actually speaking during public comment, they will be allotted the three minutes to address the board just as they would be during an in-person meeting. All comments from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded into the meeting minutes as we typically do. And I would again remind everyone to please keep your connections on mute until you're ready to speak. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 247 pages. So I'll move on to item two. Item two is public comments. And as I just said, at an in-person meeting, during public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. This meeting is being conducted remotely, so I will now ask people who are watching on YouTube Live to submit comments for the village staff to read. You can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video screen. While they're typing, I will ask the staff whether any public comments were submitted in advance of the meeting.
This is Alex Artiega from the Village Manager's office. We did receive four public comments to read. Okay. The first public comment is from Mark Wiremoller. "I ask the Wilmette Village Board to focus all resources towards opening businesses now, especially bars and restaurants. While limited outside dining should be allowed by Friday, I ask that indoor dining to be endorsed by the Village at 50% capacity to open this week. The Village should make all accommodations and waive all fees to reopen now. This is being done as of May 23, 2020, in Indiana, and as of last week in Wisconsin. Illinois and Wilmette is way behind the rest of the country. In my opinion and others, it is unsafe to remain closed any longer. There are serious questions over Governor Pritzker's authority and judgment on keeping restaurants closed. The damage from businesses closed from COVID-19 might result in worse consequences if reopening process doesn't go much faster. In addition, I call for the Village tomorrow to have a hiring freeze, along with freeze on capital projects, freeze master plans, no new borrowing or bond issues, cut unnecessary spending, and a reduction in the property tax levy. I look forward to this board of Wilmette showing great leadership to reopen businesses and indoor dining now. Thank you, Mark Wiremoller." That is the end of the first email. Our second public comment is from Deb Wilson. "Hello, I live on Fieldland Court and would like to strongly state how important the Hibrid Reservoir Project is to me and my fellow neighbors on Fieldland Court and Valley View Drive. We experienced severe yard flooding because the sidewalks on Glenview Road are too high, and there is nowhere for the water to go. Water stands in the backyard of, in the back of our yards for days. All year long, it is unsafe. It is a brewing ground for mosquitoes. Neighbors have talked about this issue for years. Now that there is a project that may help, do not push it back. This project must remain on track because we desperately need help. Thank you, Deb Wilson, 225 Fieldland Court." Moving on to our third public comment. This is from John Marshall. "Dear President Polinski and Village Trustees, I support the idea of closing some streets or some lanes of the streets during the lunch and evening hours so that our wonderful restaurants can have more outdoor seating as they recover as swiftly and safely as possible from the hardships of the COVID-19 crisis. Sincerely, John Marshall." And our last public comment is made by Daniel Bannerman. "Good evening. My fellow neighbors and my family would like to express our concerns for the standing water in our backyards. We need a solution and answers to how this issue is going to be handled and resolved in a timely manner. Several of our families have younger children, and safety should be everyone's number-one priority when resolving this matter. The standing water has also made our backyards useless, especially during this pandemic and quarantine. Speaking just from my property, we cannot walk on what used to be grass, which has now become a muddy, compacted mess. It has also grown what looks like to be an algae, and the smell is unpleasant, to say the least. We know sometimes when things get built or constructed that things get missed or overlooked, but we also expect a solution. Please find a way to allow the water in our backyards to flow to Glenview Road some way or another. The sidewalk that runs parallel with Glenview Road does not properly allow the water to run off and drain off of our properties. We have reached out to the Village Wilmette engineers, and Bridget Berger visited our street last week, and we appreciate the responses, and are pleased to see you all come out and take a look for yourselves. Please continue to work with us and let us know what your next steps are. We look forward to your response. Daniel Bannerman and all our neighbors around us, 209 Fieldland Court." And those were the end of the public comments we received at our email address.
Okay, so let me move on now to individuals who have connected to the meeting either via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone. Are there any who would like to address the board? If so, I'd ask you to unmute yourself at this point in time, and let me know your name, and I will create a list of people who wish to address the board. Okay, hearing none. I'll move back to Mr. Artiega. Were there any comments while you were reading or while I was asking the question that residents added to the chat window on YouTube Live?
There were. It was just a comment from Mr. Wiremoller just to confirm that we received his public comment at our publiccomment@wilmette.com email address. So his public comment has been read.
Okay, Mr. Wiremoller, thank you for watching, and your public comment was read. Okay, so I think that covers public comment, item two. And we'll move on to item three, which is the consent agenda. As described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the consent agenda. Tonight, that is items 3.1 through 3.3. It's all the items that are numbered three are on the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience, is not removed by one of the trustees, it will be approved and it will not be discussed. So again, we're going to go through our public comment process, in essence, to ask if there is any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. So if you'd like to do that and you're watching on YouTube Live, you should submit your request now. I will ask Mr. Artiega again. Were there any such requests that were submitted in advance of the meeting, either via publiccomment@wilmette.com or otherwise?
There were none, no.
Okay. And then for people who are connected via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda, I'd ask them to identify themselves now. You have to unmute yourself if you want to do that. Okay, so that's given people a chance to type onto YouTube Live. Is there anything on YouTube Live regarding removing an item from the consent agenda?
At this time, there are no comments on YouTube Live.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Artiega. Are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. I may have a motion to adopt the consent agenda. So moved.
So moved.
I believe trustee Sullivan beat you there, trustee Barrow. And then trustee Barrow, would you like to second it then?
Yeah, I'll second it, thank you.
Okay. So moved by trustee Sullivan, seconded by trustee Barrow. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Trustee Sullivan.
Hi.
Trustee Barrow.
Hi.
Trustee Dodd.
Hi.
Trustee Kersman.
Hi.
Trustee Kennedy.
Hi.
Trustee Plonket.
Hi.
President Polinski.
Hi, so the motion carries. The consent agenda has been adopted. We'll move on to item four, which is report of officers. And I have a report tonight. I would like to thank the 60 Girl Scouts and the 80 Boy Scouts who planted these small American flags that you may have seen along Wilmette's roadways this weekend to commemorate Memorial Day. Because of the current stay-at-home order limiting groups, the annual Memorial Day parade and ceremony at Village Hall were canceled. And the scouts normally hand out those flags to the crowds along the parade route, but instead, they planted the flags. I think that was a really great effort on their part, and it helped add a little bit of flair to Memorial Day that was not the same. I would also like to thank Herter Post 46 of the American Legion and a number of members of the village staff for putting together a virtual Memorial Day celebration, which can be found at the Village's YouTube channel. While we were unable to get together in person on Monday, I believe we still honored the men and women who gave their lives in defense of our country through this virtual ceremony. So thank you to everyone who was involved in that, and thank you to the scouts and their leaders for inserting a little bit of spirit into an otherwise very different Memorial Day. I will move on to Mr. Bremen, a report from our village manager.
All right, thank you, President Polinski. I have two reports tonight. The first is in regards to the Wilmette French Market. I just wanted to inform the village board and the community that we are working with our third-party vendor who hosts the market to target a early June opening. We've received a safety plan today that will address occupancy limits, social distancing, and other guidelines that our staff is working through already. And as soon as we have an opening date, we will make that available to the public on our website, our E-News, and our various social media outlets. Second item tonight is outdoor dining in Wilmette. I know we're all very excited, as it looks like we're going to be moving into Phase Three in just a couple of days, which will allow restaurants to serve patrons outside of their facilities. We've been in communication with our restaurants. In terms of the restaurants that are outside of our downtown, those that have parking lots, this is a fairly simple matter from the Village's standpoint. We're going to remove all red tape in any bureaucracy and make sure that they have the ability to access the existing parking lots that they have for dining. They'll just need to work with the property owners if they don't own those lots themselves to work through that, but we want to facilitate that outdoor dining as quickly and as easy as we can. Downtown is a little bit more challenging because most of our restaurants don't have parking lots, but we've been meeting weekly for the last three weeks with our downtown restaurants via Zoom. They have asked us not to close the streets. I know we've seen some communities in the region closing streets to provide additional outdoor dining. That, in view of our restaurants, would be an impediment to curbside pickup. We need to, and obviously want to respect the wishes of our restaurants, so we'll keep our streets open. We are working with them to expand dining along the sidewalks downtown, potentially closing some sidewalks, and also looking at using some of our village property, whether it's the Village Green, Veterans Park and parking lot, Burmeister Parking Lot, or other areas to facilitate either table service or possibly carryout. So we continue to work through that. We'll provide more information on our website, social media, as that becomes available. But at a minimum, existing outdoor spaces will be able to be used on May 29, assuming that we move into Phase Three with the Northeast region. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bremen. Mr. Stein, our Corporation Counsel, your report tonight?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
So we'll move on to item five, which is the report of Liquor Control Commissioner, and there is no report tonight. So then we'll move on to item six, which is the Standing Committees. First up is 6.1, Land Use Committee, trustee Barrow.
No report.
Just so odd hearing that, by the way, from the Land Use Chair. The Finance Chair is... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chris Barrow.
Week after week, no report.
Well, if there's any more, hopefully we'll get back into action soon. And then you will not be able to say that anymore, hopefully.
Look forward to it.
The Finance Committee Chair is trustee Kennedy.
Yes, the 2020 Financial Analysis Update is on the agenda for today, and Mr. Hallgren, assisted by Ms. Malloy, are ready to present.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Turn the floor over to the staff.
All right, I will go ahead and share the presentation. All right. Is everybody able to view the screen?
It is not up on the, well, it is now on the screen.
All right, perfect. So before you is the 2020 Financial Analysis. At the April 28 board meeting, we presented initial projections for what the potential impact of COVID-19 would be on the village revenues and expenses. We had gone through and done an analysis that adjusted budget figures by a range of factors based upon historical revenue performance. We built sales tax from the bottom up, and we looked at the state for projections on state distributed revenues. From there, we created two different scenarios. The first one was really looking at an economic recovery starting in July, and the second scenario was looking at one starting in the fourth quarter. At that meeting, we discussed our intent to come back to the board on a monthly basis based to review the prior month actuals and to provide refined projections based upon those new data points that we've gathered. So the first piece is really looking at our revenue performance in April. We received several updates from the Illinois Municipal League in Cook County. And then there was also a regional survey done of communities surrounding their revenue projections as well as expense projections. So from a revenue performance perspective, we had a very positive April. Our April actual was at $2.2 million, which was slightly over what we had had in our original budget and significantly over what we had had in our period four, in our two different scenarios. So we were over about $270,000 on period scenario one and around $300,000 over what our period four scenario was. One of the main drivers of this was sales tax. Sales tax dollars come in April that are related to January sales. And we had expected to see a downturn based upon those two scenarios, but we actually saw a performance significantly higher than our original budget projections. So we did see some positive movement in the month of April. The second area was looking at updates from the Illinois Municipal League. They provided updates on income tax, personal property tax replacement, motor fuel tax, and local use tax. What we did in most of these scenarios is matched our projections to those updates provided by the municipality. Additionally, we received information from Cook County about property tax distributions. Originally, those are received in, towards the end of July and beginning of August. They had pushed the deadline back to October without any penalty. So therefore, we shifted a component of our property tax receipts out to October. We did not reduce any of the revenues, but we just shifted the dollars out. And then the last part was looking at a survey of regional communities. And from an overall perspective, we're fairly aligned with other communities when you factor in some of their unique situations. So a community that is heavily sales tax dependent on vehicle sales, which we are not, is going to expect to see a higher reduction in their sales tax revenues on an annual basis. What we provided here on this chart was looking at our projections and the adjustments in each one of the scenarios from the prior model that was given. So for instance, if you go down the line and you look at income tax, we adjusted incomes tax down. The state of Illinois expected income tax to decline by 15%. So in scenario one, we see around a $200,000 decrease, whereas in scenario two, we show a $20,000 decrease. Now, the difference here is that in scenario one, we had projected a much more positive results coming out of income tax. But now that we're matching them together, you see a much larger reduction in scenario one. There was a slight uptick in licenses. Other, which includes hotel tax, PPRT, saw a slight uptick, and that was based upon performance and matching to the state's, the state on PPRT. Permits, we brought down by another $90,000, and this was based upon our performance in period four. Originally, we had projected a 40% reduction in permits, but we actually saw a reduction of around 50%. So we made the adjustment down for that revenue source. Property taxes and real estate transfer taxes held steady. Sales tax, even though we didn't make any adjustments to the forecast models, because we had such a positive April, we expect to see around $70,000 more for fiscal year 2020. Now, there may be a component of the downturn that bleeds into 2021, but as we start to gather more information, we will provide updates to the board. We saw an uptick in service charges and a decline in utility taxes. Now, note to the utility taxes is this decline was unrelated to COVID-19. We have continued to see a slide in telecommunications tax revenues as people shed landlines, and this revenue just continues to fall year after year.
Mr. Hallgren, Peter Barrow here. I interrupt and ask a question?
Yes.
Could you speak briefly to us about the data that the Illinois Municipal League provides and where that data comes from and how it's generated, and in particular, its applicability to Wilmette's circumstances?
So they look at it from a statewide perspective, and they are mainly looking at those revenues that are on a per capita basis. So the ones that are distributed on a per capita basis are the local government, or the income tax, PPRT, motor fuel tax, and then local use tax. So they are really looking at it from a, from a global, or from a statewide perspective to try to give updates that they are receiving information from the state on. So we then take their information, and there's not going to be a variance between the impact to Wilmette versus the impact to Evanston or Glenview. Everybody should be seeing the same reduction throughout the remainder of the year for those per capita-based revenue sources.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was hoping to learn. Thank you.
Then when we look at the revenue outcomes, we wanted to compare our original model in April to the updated model that we provided in May. So clearly, the budget number is going to stay consistent. Scenario one, we actually saw a decrease in our projected revenues from around $31.9 million to $31.7 million. The primary driver of this was our significant reduction in income tax, combined with permit. We saw a slight opposite effect on scenario two, where we saw a slight uptick in what we expect to see at the end of the year. And this was really driven by the positive results from sales tax. Because the income tax number was already lower in this scenario, it didn't have as much of a downward impact on scenario two. But the other part that you'll notice if you look at the chart is in period seven and period eight, our original budget had significantly higher figures for revenues, and those came down in period seven and period eight because of the property tax shift. And you'll notice in period 10 that there's an uptick in both of those scenarios, and that's because of that shift of property tax revenues. Shifting over to the expense side, again, our original projections use a variety of methodologies. We looked at a historical trend. We looked at cash flows for specific projects. And then we've refined those original projections based upon new data points. Same methodology as revenues. We looked at our expense performance. We factored in savings options, and again, looked at other communities and what they were doing from a cost-cutting perspective. So the first part was expense performance. We were almost spot-on from a general fund perspective. We were about $90,000 under where we had expected to be, but from an overall perspective, that's a pretty good mark on $2.6 million. What we've done for the updated model for this month was we factored in additional savings. So we had already pulled in the $300,000 in operating expenses, training, winter operations, other things that had been identified last meeting. This additional meeting, in this meeting, we've also pulled in $150,000 for the engineering program, and these are not changing our service levels. What these are doing is they are taking the bid pricing savings and applying them to the budget. We also included the nearly $250,000 in SURF deferrals, the Sidewalk snowplow, and the Council AV equipment. And then the last part was looking at the deferral, $200,000 for the deferrals comprehensive plan.
I'd like to jump in. I'm sorry, if I could jump in on this slide real quick on the engineering. The board may recall that we're going to be discussing the road, alley, and brick programs at our first June meeting to confirm whether we want to proceed with the bid results or reduce those programs further. Our staff recommendation is going to be to maintain the programs as-is and do all the work we set out to bid due to the favorable bid pricing and the performance we've seen here to date. There's also some additional good news. We are changing our recommendation on what we call our engineering maintenance programs, sidewalks rejuvenation. We are recommending to cut that by $70,000. We received additional MFT funds from the state in the amount of about $285,000 just about a week ago. That's part of the state's first bond sale for the capital program. So we have unanticipated revenues that have to be used for engineering, road-related capital. And there's an additional caveat that they have to be used for long-term capital, so projects that you would be issuing debt for. For example, the Brick Street overlays on Forest Avenue would be a place those funds would be appropriate for. So we feel comfortable moving forward with the engineering program, including full funding of these maintenance programs. We are told that we're going to receive another additional MFT outlay later this year in the same amount of $285,000, but that's dependent on the state issuing their debt for the capital program, which I think is possibly questionable depending on how the state's revenues perform. So we're not going to build that into our projections moving forward, but it's good news this year. It doesn't necessarily solve our capital challenges for 2021. And as we prepare our CIP that the board will be reviewing in just a couple of months, we will be taking a hard look at our engineering program, including alleys, roads, brick overlay, brick restoration, and the maintenance programs as well. Sorry to interrupt, Eric.
That's right. Trustee Sullivan had a question.
And maybe the way you said that, what did you do with these numbers as it relates to the budget? You said it when you were talking about the engineering program savings. And maybe, because I'm sort of, it's going to be a mouthful, but did you, are we, you're saying, you know, of the $242,000 we budget for SURF, $200,000 for Count Plan, so that $442,000, you're going to remove that from budget?
That is correct.
The $150,000 in... The 150,000 in engineering programs, we've bid those out. We, you're just, the bids have come in that much less, as well as the 300,000, whatever we were supposed to spend during the winter operations training, we just haven't spent it. So that, that's been removed as well.
Yeah, so that first $450,000 is just due to natural savings in winter operations or bid pricing. The last $442,000 are deferral of projects or purchases.
Yep, okay, got it.
And Eric, to clarify, that first 300,000 in operating savings includes a number of discretionary expenses that we've delayed, such as tree planting this year that we may review later on, but as of right now, we are assuming not spending.
If I could add a quick question too. The comprehensive plan deferral, have we, somehow, are we voting on that yet, or is this a suggestion, or is this definite?
It's a timing issue. To, to be able to, the comprehensive plan requires a significant amount of community workshops and public meetings and participation, and we don't see that being practical this year, or even if the governor's phasing allows for it, that people would necessarily be comfortable participating. And it's such an important project, we need to make it easily accessible. So it's something that we would be looking at reprogramming in 2021 and hoping that we're in a better place to hold those types of workshops.
Okay, thanks. And then I just had a question. This is trustee Dodd. I just wanted to confirm that the, it's, maybe it's building on what trustee Sullivan said, that 242 in SURF deferrals and the 200,000 in a deferral for the comprehensive plan, those were included in the, in the assumptions you made when you showed us this model last month, or is this new?
These are new additions to, to this, this model. Previously, in the last model, they were, they were options that we presented to the board, and we've moved forward with including them as savings, as reductions to the expense side.
Okay, and so I, just to refresh my memory, then, the 242,000, I actually remember the discussion on the comprehensive plan, the 242,000, we voted on those and approved those deferrals. That's not something that's happening in the June meeting? What's happening in the June meeting is potentially additional savings?
So I'll, I'll take that. There's no actual vote on those. So there, you know, we're, we're basing it on the discussion we had back in March about budget savings. And so there's no action for the board to take. If the board, you know, comes to us and says, we would actually like to proceed with those items, we would take that direction, bid them out, and bring them to the board for approval. So that, there's not an actual board vote to defer.
Okay, I just couldn't remember. I just, I apologize. I just couldn't remember exactly where we landed on that. Okay.
In, in essence, Mike, I think, Mr. Berman, what you're saying is that if we don't do something, we don't have to vote to not do it. We have to vote to, to do it, not to not do it.
Right. And our, and our recommendation continues to be to defer these items. We still don't know the full impact of COVID on our financials, and these are two items we've identified out of a pretty significant SURF budget this year that we can defer until at least next year.
And then the last part, oh, and then the last part here was looking at the additional costs that we have brought on due to COVID-19, and that's the $530,000 for the economic grant program for the sales tax and the service-based business program. So we're adding those dollars to the budget. So all of these items have been factored into the expense outcomes.
And Eric, just to refresh everyone's memory, we spent, what, about half of that 530,000 so far?
That is correct, yes.
And we're going to ask the board to revisit that program at the next meeting in June. That was always the intent, was to go back, see how much we had paid out in grants after the first wave, and then determine whether we wanted to do a second round or not. So we'll be bringing that to the board at our June meeting.
So for the next slide, I was going to turn it over to Melinda to have a discussion on the pensions.
So on this slide, trustees, this is as part of the packet that you reviewed, item 3.3 has actuarial valuations for both the police and fire pension funds. The chart that you see here comes from those valuations. One of the things that I think you're going to notice right away is that the funded ratios for both the plans increased. There is an itemization as to what caused the change year over year. In a brief sense, there were plan changes that were driven by statutory items that were approved in the last session. It did increase benefits for the two-tier participants. Another change is there was an increase in our investment rate of return. So we had talked about that as part of our year-end. So on an actuarial basis, we were almost at 7.7%, which is above the seven and a quarter assumed rate of return that we have on the funds. And then the other part of the valuation was the first step that we are making towards going to, to the 15-year rolling amortization method. So if you can recall, last year, we spent quite a bit of time talking about a 15-year rolling amortization and why we would want to move that way. And what we decided on in the various meetings that we had is that we would phase this in over time. So again, in the agenda item that you had in front of you, it showed that in 2020, what we are working towards is a 20-year amortization. In 2021, it would go to 18 years, then the next year 16, and then eventually getting to a 15-year rolling amortization. The reason why we were doing this is to mitigate the impact on both the property tax levy, and we were also looking at a way to utilize reserves to help mitigate the impact on the property tax levy, with the ultimate goal of, by tackling the unfunded liability number over time, that would mean that the burden on the property tax levy will actually start to decrease. That was the whole purpose behind this. So in this first year of working towards this, we had, as part of our budget process, dedicated 200,000 of our reserve to help meet what was going to be the employer required contribution. After the calculations are done, that number is closer to about 192,000. And then we will be revisiting this as part of the 2021 budget process to see how this can be managed with both the property tax increase and the use of reserves.
So to jump in here real quick, it's, that's recommendation to continue with the phased-in amortization for this year using reserves. Obviously, we're sensitive to spending out of reserves, given the revenue challenges we just discussed previously. But $200,000 is one of our small reserve contributions for this next year in '21, and then again in 2022. We're looking at a $500,000 a year. So we'd like to get moving forward on the phase-in and then can reevaluate this as part of our FY21 budget process when we have more information on where we stand financially.
That will be something that we will have to vote on because it's act, it is an action for that, for that transfer to occur, correct?
It was actually part of what was approved tonight.
The transfer was approved, or we just accepted the actuarial?
You both accepted the actuarial reports, and you approved the transfer of monies into both of the pension funds.
But we're not intending to make the transfer until we come back to the board with our, our second, our late July financial update, get direction, and then we would make the transfer in August. So there will be a discussion and decision point.
And we've, we've already, we've already made the big transfer, though, right? That was earlier in the year?
No, we've not transferred any money into the pension funds. What's happening is the tax levy gets deposited directly in there. What this transfer is, is just that, that differential.
Got it, right. Because we changed it, and we started levying directly with the property tax to pay the pensions instead of having a general fund levy that was then transferred.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, forgot about that. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to the next piece is looking at that expense outcomes. So again, looking at our budget number, stay consistent, but our projection number from April to May, our expenses go down from an overall perspective, and this is due to that layering in of those savings, additional costs, and then our performance from period four. So we do see a slight downtick in our overall spending projections for the remainder of the year.
And I'm going to jump in one more time. Sorry, Eric. We, we also have several positions that we're holding vacant right now as part of a non-public safety hiring freeze. So those are baked into the January through April numbers, but the future numbers are not assuming that yet. So we do anticipate additional salary and benefit savings moving forward. We just haven't projected yet. We're still early in the year, and we would like to get a better handle on our, you know, which vacancies we may need to fill prior to end of the year before finalizing those projections. So there will be additional personnel savings as the year goes on.
Eric, why, why is, why didn't May, and maybe I missed it somewhere in the details, but why is May such a big jump in expenses?
It's due to some of the timing components related to the neighborhood storage project. So, or, oh wait, no, this would be for the general fund. The expenses would have to do with the...
Debt service.
There we go. Thank you.
It's for the June 1 debt service. We make those payments in May.
Trustee Sullivan, are you, and you're, are you asking about the updated, we're over budget for May? And then I think...
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, yeah, what, what numbers really jumped that by a million dollars over more than what we spent the prior four months? It looks like it's about 900,000, obviously, and, and I'm looking at the blue.
Yeah.
So I was just sort of curious what drove that, and I didn't recall.
Sure. Well, I can do a follow-up with you on that one. I don't know, but we will, yeah, I will verify what the breakout is in those, in the May numbers.
And some of that overage is also going to be for our economic relief grants.
Yeah, that's the difference. Yeah, that would be the difference between the orange and the blue piece, but as far as that, the jump from April to May for the blue, we'll just confirm and follow up with the board on what that increases.
Got it. Yeah, I, I'm trying to find it, and I apologize. I don't know what, because I'm looking at my PDF. I'll, I'll find my question.
All right. And then as far as the last component, is really pulling all these numbers together for the general fund and looking at the reserve projections. So looking at the beginning reserve, we're looking at around 15 million dollars. If we layer in the new revenue projections combined with the updated expense projections, you'll see what our, our projected ending reserves are. So from a budgetary perspective, we expected to be at around 38%. Now, under our worst-case scenario, scenario two, we are expecting a decrease of, decreasing that reserve level to around 30.8%. Now, the next piece was a question that had been posed by several board members in regards to the cash position for the village, and this cash position is really looking across all funds, our, our major funds, so water, sewer, as well as the general fund, to see how our spending is, spending and our revenues are impacting what our overall cash position will be. So what this chart does, the waterfall chart, is the gray bar indicates what our cash position is at the end of that month. The green indicates the dollars that are coming in, and the red is indicating the expenses that are going out. So you'll start to see in the month of April, May, and June, significant spending, and that's really related to the neighborhood storage project. And then you'll see the big jump in cash in the month of July is related to our projected bond issuance, which we are on target to receive those dollars in the month of July. So from an overall perspective, we feel very confident in our cash position, even though there is a downward trend during the first several months, but that is really a drawdown due to capital expenses that we will reimburse ourselves for in the month of July. So from the next steps perspective, we'll continue to refine these projections on a monthly basis, continue to evaluate our levels of risks, monitor the state and county to see if there's any additional updates for shifts in revenue dispersments. So just as a precursor to our next monthly update on this, the state approved the budget this past weekend, and one of the items in there was the reduction of, or was the providing additional income tax dollars to the state, or to the municipalities. There originally had been a 10% reduction, and they're giving back a component of that about 5%. We're also watching the state and the federal government for reimbursement opportunities, and then we'll continue to report these findings to the village board on a monthly basis. So with that, if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Hallgren, or Mr. Berman, or Ms. Malloy? This is very helpful, and I think the reporting cadence monthly is, is, is good, in particular, given this, given where we are right now. Trustee Sullivan, I see you moving.
Yeah, no, and, and I, because I'm going between my good reader and my question, and I agree, the reporting's good. Where I'm trying, the cash position and was related to my question, obviously, it's the important, you see the importance of the bond issue, but we, we run this chart without the bond issue, and everything else you've taken out. What does this, what does this look like without the bond issue?
We would have a, we would start to run into a cash position issue towards the end of August, the beginning of September. We've, we've run that through, but it's also just due to the timing of the, it's due to the timing of the payments for the neighborhood storage project. But we're on track right now, and Melinda can speak to it probably a little bit better about the timing for the bond issuance, but I know that we're still pulling together information now for the preliminary official statement. We have ratings agency calls that are almost scheduled or have been scheduled.
Yeah, and I think the market, Ms. Malloy can certainly comment. I don't know what the financial advisors have said, but the, the, the things that I've read from, from my company, AAA muni rates are actually lower now than they were at the beginning of the year. I thought I read that this morning. So we're actually in a better spot, believe it or not, than we might have been.
And, and the state of Illinois did launch their bond, right? The 800 million? Did that get launched?
The state, so this is Melinda, the state did an issue earlier? Is that the one that you're referring to, Dan? And right now?
Like, like a week ago, last week, I thought it went to market.
Um, I, yes, they, they actually did go to market with an issuance, and they are now looking to do a short-term issuance. They, they actually had it on the calendar, and they've pulled it. They're actually going to try and use a federal funding mechanism instead.
Melinda, Peter here. When would you expect the official statement to be available?
So we are going to be coming to the board at the June meeting with both the authorizing ordinance and a draft of the preliminary official statement. We're working on the official statement right now.
Yippee, that's great.
And Melinda and Eric, as I look at the cash position, the gray bar over the, over, mine, over where your arrow was, July 20, July 20? Move over to the right. There you go. Is the bulk of that increase related to the stormwater? Is that, is that when our initial big bills are, are due?
The, the gray is the cash that's coming in the door.
Okay.
Right, so that, or sorry, that's what our balance is going to be?
The gray is what our balance will be.
Oh, sorry, yep, okay.
The red is going out. So the expenses are actually pretty well phased between April, May, June, and July, but the bulk of those expenses in July are really related towards the neighborhood storage project as we start to see significant progress in that, in that work.
So this is trustee Dodd. If I, if I read this correctly, just to build on trustee Sullivan's question, I mean, do we have any concerns that we're not going to be ready to go to market in June? Because if I, and if we aren't, I just, is that, because this would show that our, if I'm looking at this correctly, this would show that our cash position in June, base, and then looking at what our red outlay is, our outlay is larger than our cash, cash position, at least in terms of size, I'm assuming it is, which would say that we have to go to market in June, correct? Or else we don't have any, we won't have enough money in reserves.
You will still, there will still be a component, because not all of the green is related towards the bond issuance. There's a sizable component.
Got it. Okay, okay. You're right, you're right. That's, that's also revenue coming in. So if we, okay, okay.
And I think, I mean, trustee Dodd, I think if we were delayed on a bond issue, then we would, um, you know, we would, we would have to talk to our vendors about timing of payments and the like as well. So I think the red might, would get shrunk here, but, um, but, but so far the financial advisors have been, have been working really hard and, and it appears we're on track, you know, rating agency calls early June, so.
Okay.
Uh, we should be on track here.
And, and I assume we have all of our, our, where, where our audit's going to be done?
Yes, we will have the, um, so the official audit, which should be coming to the June twenty-sixth meeting, but we'll be incorporating the financial statements into the POS.
Got it.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Hallgren, thank you, Ms. Malloy. Uh, it's very helpful. As I said, you know, sort of a monthly cadence as we're, uh, watching things here, uh, is very helpful, uh, to the board, I think, for sort of keeping, keeping, uh, up on exactly how our finances are, are performing in this environment and with, uh, some major capital spending, uh, coming down the pike here this year too, so. Um, I believe that is it for trustee Kennedy, is that correct?
That's correct, everything else is on the consent agenda.
Okay, so I'll move on to the administration committee, which is trustee Dodd.
All items were listed on consent.
So go to municipal services, uh, where trustee Sullivan is the chair.
Uh, we have one item this evening, it's item six point four-one, which is an update on the May fourth to May seven, May, May fourteenth to seventeenth rain event, which I'm going to assume I'll turn it over to Ms. Berger.
That's correct.
There we go.
Good evening. So the, the purpose of the presentation tonight is really intended to be a high-level preliminary overview of how our system responded to the storm that we had last weekend. Um, I think it's important after every major storm event that we evaluate our data, um, first so we can celebrate the successes and where the system performed well, but also so that we can, can continue to learn about where our system is vulnerable. So you can advance the next slide, Eric, thank you. Eric?
I-
Here we go.
May, is the week date for May fourteenth?
Yes, we're, we're all set. So on the, just over a seventy-two hour period between May fourteenth and seventeenth, the village received between six and a little, little over seven inches of rain. And that is calculated over that seventy-two hour period, a fifteen-year storm on the east side at the water plant and a thirty-year storm on the west side at the pump station. I think it's really important to stress that Wommet was not the only town that had flooding challenges. This was really a wide, a widespread regional event. From a record perspective, this was the wettest week in May on record as long as we've been keeping track. So it was definitely a significant event. And not all storms are created equal. This storm was particularly challenging because we had, in that short period, quite a bit of rainfall. So our soils became super saturated and even some of our sewers were not able to drain down to normal or dry weather flow before the next storm came in. Next slide, please. West Park continued to be a success story. The valve was closed for over twenty-nine hours. That means that for twenty-nine hours, instead of water flowing back into our system from our neighbors to the north and south, um, we were able to pump over that backflow valve. So that saved the village a significant amount of flooding with the folks on the west side of the village. During that storm event, in total, the West Park sanitary reservoir held just under seven million gallons of flow. And again, if you can put that seven million gallons back into the system, the only place it would have been is in folks' basements. So West Park continued to perform as expected and, um, was extremely beneficial during that event.
Ms. Berger, the, the, the tank level, what's, what's a hundred percent on the tank level, how high?
Oh, I don't have that number, but I can certainly get it back, get it back to you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to put the, the eight and a half and the eleven-nine in, into context.
Yeah, I, I apologize, I don't have that.
Okay.
Next slide, please. Eric, next slide.
It's on the reported flood, is it on the reporting flood?
Yeah, it is up on our screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so it's not showing up on my screen, there we go. Um, so we received over seven hundred reports of flooding and this is through phone calls, emails, um, Tyler service requests, as well as online flood surveys. And this is a distribution of all the, um, the flood data that we received. I think it's important to point out that we recognize this is only the reported data and there are likely signif, not significantly, but we know there were other, other instances where folks had sewer backups and yard drainage problems where they didn't report it to the village. So this is just a snapshot of those folks who took the time to report their, um, flood situation to the village. Next slide, please. Um, taking all of that data and putting it in a pie chart, um, this is consolidated, so it's not breaking it out into the different systems. The slides that are follow, um, this one will, will break it out into those basins, so it'll make a little bit more sense. But I think what's important to point out on this slide is the, the highest, um, percentages of flood data are in both seepage and, um, private yard flooding. And that really speaks to the fact that after the first rain, the ground conditions became very saturated and, um, rainwater was no longer infiltrating into the ground. And then introducing the second storm, uh, a day later, that was really exacerbated. So a lot of those localized flooding problems became much larger than if they, we would have just had the initial storm. Um, same with seepage, there was quite a bit of, uh, reports of seepage. And again, that's, um, seepage is, is really a function of, um, ground conditions. And when the ground can no longer absorb, absorb soil, or absorb, absorb water, it puts pressure on, uh, foundation walls and foundation floors and can penetrate structures, um, through those cracks. Next slide, please. And I apologize, I must have a delay, so that's why, here we go. So this is a map that shows all of the flood data on a single map. And just to put these maps in perspective, I'll give a brief description of what you're looking at. There's three colored shaded areas and they represent the different drainage basins. Um, starting from left to right is the Harms Basin in yellow. This is a separate sanitary basin that drains out to Harms Road and Lake Avenue, um, for sanitary. In the purple is the Princeton Basin and this is also part of a separate sanitary system. The Princeton Basin drains north up toward Winnetka and then up to the east. And the, um, Ridge Road is the divide line between the separate system, which is in purple and yellow, and the combined system shown in blue. So there, there really aren't many conclusions to draw from this map other than we wanted to put all the data on one map just to see where the highest concentrations of calls were from. Um, you can see there's, um, a bit higher, uh, volume of flood reports on the west side than the east side. So it starts to paint a picture on how the village systems responded.
Well, there was, there was more rain, was more rain on the west side than the east side. And, um, just remind people, as, so the combined, when people talk about opening the locks and the MWRD opened the locks, that relates to the combined system, the, the blue shaded area and that's how pressure is relieved from the system. The, um, the yellow area is where the benefit of the West Park project comes into play because that's connected to the Harms Interceptor. It's really the Princeton Interceptor that was a problem, I don't want to say just this time, but, but my understanding from conversations I had with staff during the events that the Princeton Interceptor was surcharged very early on and, and was a, was a major concern. It could have been worse even had the water come, um, in, you know, we didn't get storms this weekend and, you know, originally there was a forecast for that. But do you know that, I mean, can you talk a little bit about the Princeton Interceptor and, and-
Sure.
-its status and, and sort of the, the context, the issues around that? It's not as, it's not, it, it's not a simple issue.
Yeah, um, and I can do that with the next slide, which brings out the sanitary backups. So, um, this is just, the sanitary backup map shows just where those backups occurred across the system. So again, working from left to right, the yellow basin is the Harms Basin where the West Park sanitary reservoir is, as well as the backflow valve and that, that entire system. We know that the West Park reservoir system is designed up to a five-year storm. So with this part of town seeing up to a thirty-year event, it is not surprising that there were some localized sanitary backups in this basin. Um, it's a function of inflow and infiltration, so too much groundwater entering the sanitary system before that water had a chance to get to the reservoir itself. So we can continue to work on I and I reduction in this area and, um, that will improve our performance significantly in the future. The middle basin again is the Princeton Basin. Um, you can see a cluster of backups in the Kennelworth Gardens area. And this, all of the sanitary water in the, this basin is collected and travels north through a large junction chamber where it enters MWRD's interceptor system. So all of the water in Wommet, all the sanitary and combined water, i- is collected, but once it leaves our system, it enters what's called an MWRD interceptor. And those are just large diameter pipes that collect not only our sewage, but the, the water from our neighbors around us and takes it down to the treatment plants. Um, we know that during heavy rain events, when the water leaves Wommet's system through that Princeton Place sewer, there are some downstream controls that do not allow, allow that water to flow freely out. When that occurs, there can be some premature backups and, and that's part of what we're seeing in this system. Um, again, we also know we have, um, high concentrations of inflow and infiltration in the Princeton Basin. If we can relieve that, as well as work with our neighbors to the north and MWRD on a more regional solution, um, that's where some improvements could be seen in this area.
Bridgette, can you speak to the Thornwood Park project and how that in particular might impact the Princeton area?
Sure, thank you trustee Barrow. While the, the neighborhood storage project, which includes Thornwood Park, is in fact a stormwater storage project, the consultant that we hired to assist with our sanitary system did a modeling study of how the stormwater project would impact sanitary backups. And it was very favorable. I, I want to say between thirty and fifty percent reduction in sanitary backups could be realized once that entire neighborhood storage project is built. And that has to do with the cross infiltration between our storm system and our sanitary system when both systems are surcharged during, during events. If we can keep the hydraulic grade line down in the sanitary, in the, I'm sorry, in the storm sewer system, that will have a beneficial result in the storm system as well. So it's really, um, not quite a two-for-one, but there will see, be some benefits to Kennelworth Gardens in not only stormwater flooding, but definitely sanitary backups as well. I, I do want to also say though, we, we always encourage, we talk to so many homeowners and my heart goes out to the homeowners that we speak to that, um, have invested thousands of dollars in their basement and had a sanitary backup. That is not a call that we, you know, we want to take. Um, in all cases though, we encourage homeowners to put back, backup protection on their home, either a flood control system or an overhead sewer system, so they can stop that water from entering the basement.
And in, in layman's terms, um, Ms. Berger, is it sort of accurate to say, we're, in, in, with the Thornwood project and the, on all the projects, we're giving the water another place to go? If it can't get out the MWRD pipe, it's going to end up in a basement or sitting on the land, but we're giving it another place to go and at least for that amount of water that the system can hold, the new system can hold, it, it's got a new home.
It, it's, it's not going to be sanitary water, it'll be stormwater, but it will have a beneficial impact on the sanitary system.
Right, because of the cross infiltration, you know, the systems in theory, the sanitary sewers should be no worse in a rainstorm or otherwise because it should just be connected to our drains and our toilets, but that's not the reality of the physical system anymore, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Ms. Berger?
Yes.
Uh, this is, uh, trustee Kurzman. I'm curious if you could kind of characterize what an arrangement with MWRD and other municipalities, what would that, you know, what would that look like? Would it be sort of holding up your contributions or to the, to the system over a period of time? Or, um, can you at least sort of like give us a, a, a baseline understanding of what could be, um, you know, discussed with other municipalities?
Sure, thank you trustee Kurzman for the question. And let me start by giving a bit of background. In twenty sixteen, the village took the lead with the villages of Glencoe, Winnetka and Northfield. And we partnered with MWRD to do some flow metering in the North Shore Interceptor System. And that was really the first step to start gathering data on how the system performs during heavy rain events. Um, we know that not only Wommet, but those neighbors that I just talked about have a significant amount of I and I in their system. So that's part one to, um, helping improve the situation is for everybody to get, um, rainwater, groundwater out of their sanitary system. The next step, the next logical step with MWRD would be to approach them about a hydraulic analysis. So really putting together a model of how the North Shore system performs, not only relative to Wommet and our water, but regionally. And then from there you can start drawing some conclusions, or really identifying the bottlenecks in that interceptor system, um, to be able to come up with some options for a regional solution. The regional solution is likely going to be a combination of, um, I and I removal. Um, there's likely some large sources of stormwater that are tied in once in the North Shore Interceptor System that could be removed and put in their own separate basin. Um, or it could be a large sanitary overflow reservoir similar to, uh, West Park. So it's likely a combination of, of, um, measures that could be taken in order to improve the situation.
Thank you.
Uh, Bridgette, I have another, I have a question to build on what, um, trustee Kurzman was asking. Obviously, we've been talking a little bit about, um, what we can do to, um, help with this problem, which is what we're doing in Thornwood Park as an example and to start to retain some of the water so that we don't have so much infiltration. And hopefully that'll help, you said it's like a thirty to fifty percent-ish possibility that'll help these sewer backups. At the same time that we're doing this project, so is Winnetka doing a project, right? Um, where they're also going to be hopefully start, getting some of their stormwater, um, into the reserves or whatever. Um, and so does, um, does all of Winnetka feed in? I, well, I guess my question is more, who uses this Princeton Basin? And, and if, if Winnetka also does it, and we're just using them as one particular community, so I don't know. Does that also, will, will that have a positive impact on our residents as well, I guess?
It will, it'll be, um, a smaller benefit than say a large-scale regional project, but it will help. And trustee Dodd, to your question, you may recall that the village, the last five years has, has been working on, it's, it's called the IICP, the I, I and I Control Plan, which not only looked at the public system, but also the private system. So any tributary system to MWRD had to go through that same process of developing a plan on how we were going to, um, remove I and I. So the point here is that MWRD is taking this seriously and each town, including Wommet and Winnetka and Glencoe and the other towns that tie into the system, we all have to have a plan in place to address that I and I removal. So as those plans get built over time and there is more investment in, um, I and I removal, then the North Shore system is going to perform better and result in fewer backups for Wommet as well.
But when you say time, I mean, look, the, the MWRD does plans on twenty, thirty and fifty-year bases, not like, we're, you know, they've spent, you know, billions and billions of dollars. I mean, this has been a problem for people who grew up around here, you know, basements have been flooding in the north suburbs since I was a kid and I'm sure longer. And it's just, these are big problems that require big dollars and the MWRD does, serves, you know, as, as their name suggests, you know, the metropolitan area. Um, so, uh, there's a- So there's a lot of things that have to happen here for everything to get fixed, if you will.
Absolutely, absolutely. But that doesn't mean that we can't continue to work on our own INI removal, because, you know, every drop of water we take out of the system is adding capacity, so it's a long, but it's a marathon. It's not a sprint, it's a marathon. And moving on to the right is the blue shaded area, which is the combined sewer area. Thank you, this is actually a good map. So this shows the relief sewer system that was built in the 90s and the early 2000s. You can go back to the next map, Eric, that's fine.
Yeah, it's up on our screen.
Okay. The red lines indicate the pipes that were installed in the 90s and 2000s. These are the large diameter relief sewers. So as the combined system fills up, it overflows into those red large diameter sewers. If you can see in purple, there's smaller diameter tributary sewers that connect to the large diameter red sewers that haven't been built yet. These are in the CIP, and we know that eventually the village board may decide to install them. But I think after events like this, this gives us an opportunity to take a look at where the backups are, where the bottlenecks are in the system, and then where those proposed relief sewers are, so that we can make sure that if we do decide, or the village board embarks on funding those in the future, that we're putting them where they're supposed to be. So we had a long, probably 10 or more year period where we didn't have any sewer backups on the east side. Now with this storm, we can start to evaluate the system moving forward.
Trust, excuse me, Ms. Berger?
Yes?
Trustee Kersman here with a curiosity question about, would you expect, when you see the plotted points in the combined system, would you expect them to be clustered near where the tributaries were not, have not been built? Or do you see anything, do you have any observations to share about the placement of the sewer backups on this map?
Sure, yeah, thank you for the question. I think the only observation I would make is you can see from clustering around the Green Bay Road corridor to the north and south, around the perimeter of the basin, and those may be indicative of areas that are tied into the Green Bay Road MWRD interceptor. So as that interceptor backs up and becomes full, then those areas immediately adjacent would see a backup quicker than the other parts of town. So that's an area that requires a little bit further study. I would like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just interested to not see the plotted points near the proposed relief sewers that would be, and I would previously have thought that was like the unmet need, but that's not where I see the plots on the map, for example.
That's correct. And some of it could be a function of rainfall, and there being obviously a differential in how the rain fell across the east side, but I think your observation is correct. You know, there are some corridors where we're showing proposed sewer where aren't any backups, and that wouldn't obviously be a high priority, where updating the model as well might take a second look at where those relief sewers should be. So that's all part of the next step of evaluating the system performance, and if we're going to invest money, we want to make sure we're putting it where it has the most benefit. One more note on the combined side is the combination of not only the relief sewers, but the berms in the street that strategically hold back water, and the inlet restrictors that slow the rate of that water entering the combined system. Those measures in combination with each other really did their job during that event. The system, the relief sewer system is designed for a 10-year storm, and in no place did our staff observe water exceeding the limits of the right-of-way. So basically, the berms held back the water, the water extended across the parkways up to the sidewalk, but it didn't extend much farther into front yards, which is exactly the way the system was designed to perform. Next slide. Do you all have it on your screen?
We do not, yet.
Okay.
Yep, we're still, there we go.
Okay, and I apologize, there's a delay. Okay, here we go, seepage. Again, this is just a map that shows seepage across the village, and based on the rainfall data and the super saturated ground conditions, I think it's just interesting to show that there was quite a bit of it west side as well as on the east side. And flooding incidents, this map is a little bit, I think, interesting, because it shows, when we defined flooding as flooding on private property or flooding in the right-of-way. So flooding on private property would be those low pockets inside yards and backyards that held water over the course of the three-day storm. Obviously, there's quite a bit of it east side and west side, as we would expect. I think some of the data got lost. When we look at the street flooding in the right-of-way, which are the purple dots, there was a lot more street flooding than is actually represented in this map, and we know that because our storm system was surcharged in several locations, and we observed the street flooding. But I think some of the street flooding where the water went up into people's front yards, I think people called it in as yard flooding, so it might have been coded incorrectly. As it relates, though, to how our west side storm sewer performed, I think it was as expected. We saw quite a bit of street flooding, we saw the water rise up over the sidewalks and parkways in many areas. But it's important to point out that the design storm that the Neighborhood Storage Project is designed for is a larger storm than what we saw the last, saw last week. And that is our critical duration storm. The storm where our system really starts to surcharge and flood structures is a three-hour storm. So it's three inches and three hours. And it's, so that's a higher intensity storm over a shorter duration. The storm that we had last weekend was a much longer storm, over 72-plus hours. So we weren't going to see the pictures where floodwaters were up into front doorsteps. It was not that high. So I didn't, I know we added pictures to the agenda packet, but I just wanted to make sure there was an understanding that, we didn't add those to show you how bad the problem was. The storm that we're designing for is actually worse than what you saw. So next steps. Obviously, the project of the century is the Neighborhood Storage Project, and I'm really excited to say that next week is a momentous week, because we are planning to set the first vault piece at Community Park. So we're really excited about that. That project is moving ahead very nicely and ahead of schedule. The next phase, Phase Two at Hibbert Park, we are already starting the 30% design. We've had a meeting with the Park District staff, and we expect the board to make a decision on moving forward with that in September of this year, so that we can break around very early next year and have the park put back together for the Park District by the end of 2021. And then finally, Kennelworth Gardens and the Thornwood Park reservoir would be built in 2022. We also recommend continuing with the INI removal. This is through sanitary smoke testing. We have defects in the Princeton Basin that we'd like to follow up on this year with homeowners, and then eventually in the future, perhaps next year, resume smoke testing in the Harms Basin, which would be the last of the basins to be tested. As it relates to the Princeton Basin, we recommend working with MWRD and our neighboring villages to continue the dialogue on the North Shore Interceptor System. And then finally, we want to obviously continue with our aggressive sewer maintenance program through the sewer lining, the pipe cleaning that we do every year, which is very aggressive. We perform that in-house, as well as manhole inspections and catch basin cleaning.
Bridget, before we leave that one, can you speak a little bit to the smoke testing and how that, that's done at a homeowner's property, and if that shows whatever it shows, what the reaction, what's the consequence of that?
Sure, thank you, Trustee Barrow. Smoke testing is a method of finding cracks in the sanitary system, which is indicative of groundwater penetrating the sanitary system. So that's the infiltration part of the INI. It'll also detect point sources of inflow, that's the inflow proportion. So basically, this smoke testing can identify defects on the public system, so where we might have an inlet that has cracks in it, that's infiltrating into the sanitary system, that inlet will actually smoke during smoke testing. We have a lot of laterals, so the pipe that connects your home to the main sewer in the street. When we push smoke through that sanitary system, that lateral will likely smoke if it's an old clay pipe that has open joints in it. We also find downspouts that at one point were connected but weren't properly disconnected from the sanitary sewer. That's a large source of infiltration into the system. So the approach currently is to take those more inexpensive, we call them the Home Depot solutions, that are roughly $100, a little more, a little less, where homeowners can make a big difference in our system. So we go through and do the smoke testing, and then we'll follow up with a letter to the homeowner, giving them notice of the defect and an opportunity to make the correction, and then follow up subsequent from there if that action isn't taken. So this is really the first layer of removing easy-to-identify-and-remove sources of INI from the system. The next conversation is a little bit more difficult, and that is the laterals, which we know are a significant source of INI, and having a program in place to address those eventually.
Thank you. If a homeowner's lines are identified, are they obligated to take some action to remediate that?
Not at this point, Trustee Barrow. That would be another discussion for Municipal Services at another time.
It's a, it's a big number.
It's a big number.
It's a big number, the number of homes where there's likely an issue?
The cost to fix is a big number.
The cost to fix, meaning more than simply a disconnect?
Correct. More than what we call the phase, the phase one defects are, like I said, in the $100 range, give or take. The next layer of enforcement, or I guess enforcement might be a strong word, but the next layer of managing the system will be replacing or lining those sanitary laterals, which per the village code are the homeowner's responsibility.
Right, so it's a big, it's a big number for the homeowner.
That's a big, that's a big job, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it. Okay, thank you.
And that is all for the presentation. If there aren't any other questions?
Any questions from the trustees? I know some of you had asked questions of the staff and had those answered already. Appreciate the diligence on your part there.
Good update.
Okay, so Trustee Sullivan, I believe that was all on Municipal Services, correct?
Yeah, the other item was approved on consent.
Okay, Public Safety is Trustee Kersman?
No report.
And then Judiciary is Trustee Flunkett?
No report.
Item 6.7 is reports from special committees. There are no reports from our special committees. Item seven is new business, no additional new business to discuss, so we'll move on to item eight, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Who is that? Was that, that was Trustee Kennedy?
Correct.
Okay, so a motion by Trustee Sullivan, second by Trustee Kennedy. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adjourn?
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Flunkett?
Aye.
President Polenski?
Aye. So the motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Total info, news.